For me, this. Um, was just hitting the New York thruway.
Oh, gosh.
So.
Poor guy.
I told him to hurry up and he might get here just before we end.
Before midnight, yeah.
Um, but I don't think the pre is just gonna.
Davis, Davis not coming?
I haven't heard anything from him, so.
And Vicki's at the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, Vicki's whitewater rafting in the Grand Canyon.
Poor dear.
Ah.
She says he is not available by phone.
And she gotta take it, that's pretty awesome.
Yep.
So let's uh go ahead and uh start our meeting tonight. Um. First item on our agenda is the public hearing on the proposed tree trimming. On uh Pyco Road, um. This is a hearing required uh. Since Pyco is a designated scenic uh road in town. And um. I guess uh uh I'm curious, wh- which power company is?
Um, so. It's the Co-op.
Okay. I kind of figured it must be because there's cross-country lines.
Yeah. It was Sam uh, who was representative from.
Great.
The Co-op and I guess. Or have him tell you, describe what you want to do and.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a part of our normal maintenance program. We come around about every eight years or so and just do regular.
Can I interrupt you for a minute though?
Oh, right ahead.
Um, let's define where Pyco Road is and um. So is Pyco Road? When you take a left, immediate left off Goose Pond Road, is that Pyco Road or is that Bliss?
That's Pyco Road, and heads up, so is that Baker?
Uh, we're back to Baker now.
It's Baker.
So from Goose Pond Road all the way back to Baker, you you take a left and then another left.
It's a little complex intersection with.
Claflin.
Claflin, Claflin Lane, yep.
Yeah.
Take a left, you go down that hill, right, we ran off of Goose Pond.
Yeah.
Hill there, and then you go to the right, yeah.
So, so then um the other question is, does this pertain to the cross-country area as well as? What's adjacent to our roads?
The um, little trim that the. The hearing only is on Pyco Road, that's the only scenic road that they are regarding the road.
Yeah, okay.
So, any other trimming they're doing.
Cross-country stuff is independent.
Okay. Sam, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but now you may continue.
Yeah, and welcome to interrupt, but questions are always welcome. Um. So, why, send David the. Our spec beforehand, but basically you stand right under that wire and. We're trying to clear fifteen feet to either side. And we're only interested in vegetation that is gonna grow taller than fifteen feet. Cause that's gonna interfere with the wire or something. So what this looks like on Pyco Road is a lot of brush, which is, you know, about five inches around or less. Um. Which is not why we're here, cause um really the RSA says that if it's bigger than that five inches. I need to consult the ONG. So there are three or four. Um, semi-mature to mature trees. That I think should come down that are hazard to the lines and the roadway. That we would like to take out at no cost to the town. So that's the short version of it. I want to leave room for your curiosity if it concerns better understand.
And so have you marked these trees?
Yeah.
Okay, and are you contacting the landowners?
Yes, yeah, so everyone gets a letter forty-five days in advance. And then in addition, we're sending out phone calls prior to showing them.
And is this next year's work or this winter or what's the?
This is gonna be from October to the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, this year.
I thought scenic roads didn't have wires.
Yes, it did.
You.
I thought that was one of the criteria that I don't.
Hmm.
It might make my job easier if that was true.
Right.
So I have to confess that I drove that and I was looking for flags and I was in a little bit of a hurry, but I didn't see any flags.
That's fair, they're hard to see, they're red and black checkered. I have a few, I just printed out some pictures of the trees, pictures I took that we could pass around. That might help a little bit, but. Well, it'd be good to see that in person.
Yeah, I've I've seen them. So like, those are the only trees that you're, that's the only work that's gonna be done.
Right, and the work that's under, you know, that five-inch diameter or so. There would be trees beyond that that are not marked.
Yes, so basically, anything that is under that within fifteen feet, you're just gonna just take out.
That's the idea, big growth.
So like, so 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 that basically. You know, the whole purpose, right, of designating this road. In its current classification. Is to not do that. Right?
I think.
I mean, I mean, I mean, like, like, if I go and I I look at. You know, the work that was done on Dorchester. Right? I mean, like, basically, everything was just like cleared. Fifteen feet, boom, everything is just like taken out.
I think that's.
And when you go and you look at, like, the classification of this road. You you can't do that. You just can't. It's a narrow road. And if you're gonna go and you're gonna go and just cut everything that is under this amount.
I can hand you a little of everything that's under that amount. So of the road. We're looking at about. A dozen trans or so.
Cause I mean, like, the ones that were marked, that were flagged, you know, like, those are perfectly fine. You know, I mean.
If it's what, what's perfectly fine?
Um, the ones that were taped.
Oh, uh-huh.
The the ones that exceed.
Not enough for everyone, but it's.
Yeah.
The other thing to share. And then this is the copy of it, pictures, do you care to see pictures of the ones that are? Yeah, so. Those are the ones with the ribbon.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. And though, yeah, so like, this is the pole at the corner of my property, okay? That hasn't been fixed for over a year.
Uh-huh.
Ain't that?
Right, that's what, and then and then if you go, like. Other pole is at the other end of my property.
Yes.
And that has a huge, you know, like, and that that line has been slacked. You know, like, and has not been fixed.
I got you, I would love to address that. You know, I mean, it's like representing the tree work.
Yeah.
I would love to work hand in hand with like yours specifically on that. Uh, I think one of the positives of this road is that the line crisscrosses the road quite often. So a lot of that corridor is roadway.
Hmm.
So that saves us from, you know, totally clearly clearing out one side of the road and. You know, being unfair in that way or destroying scenic beauty that way.
There's a, there's another one that's it's not shown here that is marked.
Like I said, the pictures may not be fully illuminated.
No, 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 like, I said, there's another, there's another tree on. That has been flagged. On the opposite end of my property. That's not shown there, but.
Okay, it might be one of those smaller clusters that.
It's with the, it's with the red and black, it's been flagged.
Yeah, so so this is the hand in hand sort of issue that I would definitely wanna work with the ONG. To address if, cause not everyone, I mean, it's here, but I don't mind, you know, like, yeah, I was gonna take it out anyway, yeah.
David, do you have anything to do with?
You know, but there's the the picture that I don't care to see.
Yeah, uh, by the way, um, what what's your name?
Thompson.
Thompson, Thompson's a first name or last name?
Last name.
Okay, and first name?
Scott.
Scott, okay. Scott, I'm I'm Rich Maggie, I'm the chair, and maybe we could introduce ourselves around the table here.
Tim Cook, vice chair.
Uh, Nat Niles.
I'm Hebe Quinton, I'm an alternate.
And I'm Dave Robins, planning and zoning administrator.
So 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 thanks for for coming in to that tonight. So I uh. Uh, I. I can appreciate your concern of. Whether it's the visuals or, uh, it's probably the visuals of of. Cutting stuff, um. I can also under. Appreciate that, um. You know, the the stuff that's being cut. If it were allowed to grow for, you know, twenty, forty, a hundred years, then it would be. Big stuff and um. It might uh uh in some way enhance the beauty of the road, but. Um. It 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 also presents a problem once it starts to grow up, I I I think it presents a problem once it starts to grow up into the. Power lines itself, then.
Absolutely, and 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 I would have to say with the cut list, right, it's our. The ones that have been flagged, the ones that are shown there. You know, I absolutely agree, you know, like, the one that's bending over the road, right? I mean, that literally like, you know, like, I see it.
It's just begging for a snowstorm or, you know, Christmas Day, one of the two.
It's one of many that, you know, come over off of that bank, you know? And so like, I absolutely agree, you know, like with with those. You know, my hesitation, of course, is with having. You know? The clearing of the fifteen feet. With regards to the classification of this road.
And I should say that under the state law, the. The very first, the the tree means any woody plant which has a circumference of fifteen inches or more at a point four feet off the ground, that's. What the RSA, the the state law uh says is a tree. Anything else is not covered under this section, so or is considered in the classification, so removing anything smaller is not. Under this board's jurisdiction.
Oh, even within the town?
Yeah, even within the the.
Okay.
Uh, the state law requires the planning board hold a hearing. And as I say, under the state law, anything smaller. Is not considered a tree and not part of what the hearing covers.
It was protected with this roadway.
Yeah, well, even larger is protected. With fifteen inches and larger is protected, all the smaller is done.
Diameter, diameter circumference.
So that's our classification for the protection of this roadway?
Yes, for the scenic. Yes, that is the.
Fifteen.
At four feet off the ground.
Right, so fifteen feet circumference or fifteen inch circumference is a.
Is a five.
Less than five inch.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's why we have two different number you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here is the, if you care to read, this is what we're referencing.
So Sam, if you, um, like, within fifteen feet of the lines.
Yeah.
Does, are you clearing every single thing? Pretty much?
If it if it matures, if it's like a saplings, yes, if it's. A fern, a rhododendron.
Right, right, but then, so anything, anything that's even this big.
Right, I feel like, yeah.
So it will be just what you're on.
Right, to a degree, yeah, yeah, if there are sections that are low-growing vegetation, then those need to touch them. But there are, you know, a lot of them, they're covers that we want to stay. Cause that means less trees growing up there in the future.
Right.
So we want to leave whatever makes sense.
So, yeah, so what's there has been growing for seven or eight years, basically.
Yeah, and that's part of why the state law is written as it is, is cause it's older than seven or eight years. That's by the sort of tree that is benefiting the community as far as scenic beauty. You know, if it's grown up within that time, typically it's not this big. Foliage canopy of maple that someone is enjoying in the fall as the leaves turn color. At least it's my. But good question.
Yeah.
So, uh. Nat, do you have any? Any comments or? No concerns that you wanna express, Tim?
Well, I guess my only thought is, I mean, I sympathize on both sides, you know, it's a hard problem. Cause it's been going on for years and, you know, it's not attractive, obviously, to clear all this stuff, but. You don't want the power lines to come down either, so I don't know what the answer is. There's really no good answer.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
You know, and the additional challenge is that, you know, like. As you go and you look from my property down to the next pole. You know, I mean. It it's always been cleared, you know what I mean, like. This is not something new, you know, I mean, it always gets cleared every fifteen years or whatever it is. Um, but the. They're just cut and left. Right, so the trees are just cut and dropped. Right, and now those trees are are falling into the ditches. Right? Yeah, so it's just like this.
So they weren't shipped?
I don't know if that's like.
They're supposed to be shipped by that.
About like, you know, like, clearing the ditches, but like, also like, you know, are you guys able to like, take it away?
Yeah, no, so the standard process would be that we're chipping everything possible. Okay, that would be pretty much up to about eight inches or so, you know, so a little bigger than what we're talking about. Um, and yeah, if there's large wood, it is left behind for, you know, hopefully the benefit of the community. But you're right, if there's wood in a waterway, that's an issue and it should not be left. So I'm on board with that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. It all kind of look.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and again, that's.
All the issues are coming up right now.
And that's why I think you can work with. Um. The same to say, you know, my property. Please make, you know, I I don't want the wood, so please make sure it's all gone, that's.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely case by case basis and.
It's got, you can go out, you can go out there when they're working, right, I mean, you can, you can have an interaction.
Yeah.
When they're doing.
They're in advance and bring in something, you know, so.
Yeah, you guys.
Why we have.
Work together, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind, I just don't want, you know, like. I've just been really working hard to kind of like grow some of the maples along my roadside.
Okay.
Um, that have, you know, just been beaten up, you know, and so. I just don't wanna have them, you know, like. Taken down because they're far enough away. They should be, they should be far enough away that they shouldn't cause any of this.
Yeah, if they're more than fifteen feet, they're fine.
You know, like, but you know, but I see what has happened on Dorchester where it's just like, they just, you know, like, it's like. They're cutting straight up. They're, they're creating a tunnel.
Again, I didn't, you know, um, working with Sam, he can, I would just go out. Look at the trees together, it makes it take some time, and say, okay, I don't want this done, I don't want this done. And, you know, come up with a plan that works.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, you know, I just, I, yeah, I wanna make sure that not only for my section, but, you know, the whole thing through, right, is.
Hmm.
We're not like clearing a, you know. A fifteen-foot straight-up corridor. For power lines, right? We're not doing that.
Unfortunately, that is.
Part of what we're, so now we're gonna have to, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, on this scenic road. Yeah, we're gonna have. A straight-up where limbs come in and it's gonna be cut straight up. You know, like, that, that's, that's. That's what you're gonna do.
Let me. I think it would be good if I gave an introduction as well. My name is Sam. I am an ISA, internationally certified arborist. And specialize in risk assessment. I grew up a boy scout, I love to hike in camp, I love to take my family camp. I value scenic beauty and the aesthetics, and I have no interest in ruining that for someone. So when my guys cut. They're making proper arboricultural cuts. We should not be just leaving big dead sticks in the middle of the roadway.
Right, yeah, yeah.
We wanna make a cut back to something that's gonna look decent. So if you're, you know, if anyone's dissatisfied with how it looks afterwards. It is not like, we're out of town, you know, like, that's something that can be remedied. And there are some off-road locations where it's gonna look rougher and more like this corridor that you're describing. Along this roadway, I don't foresee. It coming out that way, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and and I don't mean any disrespect, I just, I have seen. The work product of your subcontractor.
Hmm.
Okay? Not just here in Massachusetts and elsewhere.
Hmm.
And, you know, and that's where my concern was. Cause they just go. Right? And they do not take those things into consideration.
Hmm.
And what I like about my road is that I have a nice canopy. Right, and. I wanna maintain that as much as I possibly can, and that's why I'm here, I just wanna fight. To maintain that canopy as much as I possibly can. You know, I understand that, you know, like. With above-ground power lines, you know, like, we gotta do what we gotta do. But uh. But I'm gonna fight. Cause uh, you know, I grew up with that canopy and I would put it.
So, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
What does co-dominant mean?
Question. So that is a bit of a technical term, so that just means it has two stems.
Okay.
And the way that it's joined is very weak.
Okay.
Not as strong as you can get between those, and it's likely to split in half. To win, cause it's still close to the base. Just do you know how the wood covers together, yeah, it is, yeah, it could be anywhere along the tree.
So the second question is, some of these are really big. Um, were they not big? Seven or eight years ago?
Oh, they were, of course.
So what's changed now that they need to?
The condition of the tree.
I see.
Yes, whether it be decayed, um, storm damage. Sometimes that co-down and it looks okay, and then as time gets on, it starts to split and split and split. So those are the sort of conditions that do change.
Do you ever just take one side off?
Sometimes. I I think people usually don't like that, but if someone just wants one side, that's doable. You know, it's kind of depends if there's someone shed there or if it's just the woods, you know?
Right.
So I wouldn't wanna leave that over someone's property, but. Definitely within possibility.
Thanks.
I I'm curious, um. None of the, you don't seem to have any ash, um. Are there just no ash trees there or um, there's no um Emerald Ash Board?
Two.
There it is.
Two, two ash, yeah.
Um. Okay, yeah, so there there's, there's a couple of small ashes, but. But there's, there's no ash on that.
Right, none of that is close enough to ever overhanging the power lines.
Uh-huh.
That it's in the house.
Okay. Are are you experiencing dieback from Emerald Ash Board here in Lyme itself or?
I would say here less so than other places so far, I haven't done a full assessment of. You know, I've done this assessment for the purpose of this meeting.
Yeah.
I haven't gone out and all the work and looked. But it's definitely here, it's, you know, as you've seen yourself.
Yeah.
Um, but I would say. I hope the colder temperatures in this area are slowing the progress.
Yeah.
The buck itself compared to. Southern parts of the state.
Well, even Norwich has got a tremendous problem, but.
Yeah.
We seem to skip to, or at least on some of the roads that I'm aware of, we seem to. And my property, I don't, I don't, I.
Yeah.
Knock on wood is. I think I'm relatively safe so so far.
Wasn't Hickory the one that was wiped out?
Hickory, Elm, Elm was a big one.
Well, Hickory, Hickory was as well. There's. But but I'm looking at a couple of Hickories on this property.
I got you.
But they were all wiped out, you know, a hundred years ago.
Hmm.
Yeah. So is it? Is there more than these two? I mean, is it a significant population of Hickory out there these days?
I've got a ton of Hickory, maybe.
Interesting.
Little bit.
Some respect.
That's great.
Yeah.
There was a, in that area, there's a huge amount of um. Of uh. Maple and uh, pine and elm lock. With the blowout, you know, like the microburst.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like going back in two thousand seventeen?
Yeah, no, just down the hill from Pyco, yeah, it's like. You know? Or the foot.
What does that sound like?
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah. Hard to see it, but typically Hickory is a later stage in the development of.
Exactly.
So like, I don't see a lot of that under, you know, the right-of-way, mostly it is maple vine.
Yeah.
Lock age, you know?
Yeah, and I have a lot of oak.
Right, yeah. But still.
Sounds like you guys just need to walk, get out together and walk off the road.
Yeah, no, that would be absolutely, you know, I mean, but I think, you know, as far as the roadway itself. Yeah, I I I definitely wanna try and maintain the the canopy as much as, as much as possible and and not, you know. Inhibit. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to meet with as many of your neighbors as are interested and passionate, you know, with you on this.
Yeah.
If they're interested, I definitely need time to.
Okay, well. I, I I don't know that the this requires a vote.
It does, you have to vote to approve the the cutting.
Oh, okay.
And give the, basically give permission to. You know, for the cut list.
Okay.
Um, I need a point, can we?
Uh, yeah, I guess we should. So we'll appoint maybe to uh. Be a voting member tonight since we've got. One absence. And uh, select board member is also absent, so um, I'd entertain a motion to. Um, accept the request of New Metro Electric Co-op or uh, um.
Cutting on Pyco.
Cutting on on Pyco, um.
Yeah, I'll move that.
And do we have a second?
To accept or to approve? Vote for a motion.
Um, to to accept their proposal, um, to.
Or to approve their proposal.
Okay, to approve their.
Condition.
To approve it with conditions?
Yeah.
Okay, and the conditions would be?
Then, then Mr. Thompson be satisfied with the. Um, the work that's done. I don't think we have the uh authority to condition.
I I think, well, we can put, there have been conditions in the past, I'm not sure, um, there are. The board has the authority over to approve or disapprove the cutting of. Trees that meet the specific, what? In the RSA, which is the the list he gave. The smaller trees, the board has no jurisdiction over, the smaller brushy things that get cleared, um, smaller limbs that get cleared. Um, the board does not have the jurisdiction to say, no, you can't, but that's something that you two can work out as a.
But and so therefore, you know, I would be happy with, right, saying that. You know, we're gonna. Come to an agreement on them.
Right, so we're just voting what's on this list, right?
So even even less so, if I may chime in, I put anything that's less than five inches out there, is it really a courtesy?
Yeah.
And there's really only those four trees, but maybe five with the numbers next to them, that's overboding.
So it's not this list, it's. No, it's the five, it's just the five with the picture number. Yeah, there's three maples and the Hickory. Yeah. Or two Hickories.
But it is perfectly acceptable to have a condition that uh. The New Metro Electric Co-op will work with property owners to. Uh. Minimize the the impact. So, right. So basically, you know, come to an agreement to say, yeah, we can do this and not do this one and. You know, on a case by case basis.
Well, then I would go with that condition.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have, we we have a motion that uh, um. To approve the uh, of the request. Uh, with the condition that uh, New Metro Electric Co-op work with the property owners.
Right.
Um.
Right. All of them on the street.
On the street to. Which to minimize the uh visual impact of the of the work.
Right, and they they do anyway, but yeah, it's good to put it in there.
Yeah. Do we have a second? Who who is the first then?
Tim.
Okay, good. Um, all those in favor?
Tim moved it.
I moved it, yeah. Nat seconded it.
So that's.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye. Does opposed, none, none? So uh, it's approved.
Great, Sam, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for asking me out.
Yeah.
Well, Scott, it's good to meet you, thank you for coming out.
Yeah, no, I, you know, I don't know, you guys probably don't remember, I, I, I'd come to all the solar. I issues and, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Um, yeah, no, it's good. I really appreciate it.
Really, so did you grow up out there?
I did, uh, I grew up in the house that I live in now, but I bought it from my parents when they moved to, uh, Oregon.
So, they left you here?
Yeah.
So, so, uh, where are, where is the house, Scott?
It's, uh, fifty-two, so as you take the sharp turn.
If, if you're starting on Goose Pond Road?
Uh, if you start, um, from Baker Hill.
Okay, coming from Baker Hill.
Come down.
Yep.
And you go and, and you take the, the turn to the left.
Yeah.
Yep.
Blue cape there.
Okay.
They used to have a pig.
Nope.
Right, like forty, thirty years ago.
No, mine.
I used to.
My father built it, well, well, my father built it with Wayne Pike.
Yeah.
And, um, and they moved in when they got married.
I, I used to ride out of Shirley Dayton's barn, and.
Okay.
We'd come through that way, and the horses were always terrified by a pig along there.
Corner?
Yeah.
That was, is that Steve Hughes's though?
No, no, Steve Hughes is further down the other way.
And, um. Upon the, after you go around the corner and you go up.
Appreciate that.
And then, like, zero to burn.
Yeah.
Your records. Um, it could have been the people.
Okay.
Hill, right?
Yeah, it's a long time ago.
Cause that hill, that, uh, that house there was, uh, there for a long time.
Yeah.
Hmm.
But, um. Now, um, yeah, now my family's been there.
Cool.
For a long time, so, I don't know if you remember the Hewitts.
Uh huh.
David Hewitt.
Yeah.
Where, when he lived on Baker Hill.
Right.
So my great, great grandfather built that house.
Really?
And lived there.
Oh, cool.
So that whole stretch was just. Yeah, my family.
Uh. Excellent. Well, thank you.
They go. They didn't hear everything. Yeah, hanging around, um. But yeah, like, uh, I'll, uh, I'll reach out, um, what we do. Yeah, I mean, really, you know, like the big trees that you have marked, you know, which I saw. Like, you know, it's not a big deal, you know, it's just sort of. I love the team, somebody. Or, yeah. Um, and I know it's a balance, I mean, obviously, like, you know, I don't know.
So, um.
I remember.
Our next item on the agenda is zoning amendment.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's like, well, we found it about.
How do we?
And, you know.
Take a look at what you have there.
Yeah.
So.
Four people, but, um, but the worry is that the purpose of wanting to be. With bank, when that draws one, and that's how that. You know?
So this is, um, I've taken verbatim. Um.
Yes, yes, I.
Side of the zoning, and then, um.
It's not like.
On the, uh, third or fourth page at the bottom.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's number seven.
Yeah, we're letting now.
These underground propane tanks, uh, would are, would be allowed by, uh, special exception.
Hardwoods and different things.
Of.
Closer to the road.
With following and added following additional provisions.
A little bit more of a.
And, um. First one is looking where conservation districts overlap, that, uh, the tank is not located in the wetlands or a flood prone.
Get out there.
So there's. The, the conservation districts, they, they can overlap each other.
Sure, okay.
And so especially, you know, the wetlands. Yeah. And so if you, just because something is.
Thank you for having us.
Okay, very good.
In the shoreline, it could also be in a flood zone, it could also be the wetland.
Uh huh.
And so what I'm trying to do is prevent the. Saying, oh, well, hey, it's in the shoreline, so you have to allow it.
Right.
If it's in the, in a wetland or a flood zone, then, and the shoreline, then you don't.
Right. Well, that, that makes sense.
It wouldn't be allowed. And then the second one, um. Uh, the elevation of the bottom of the tank shall be certified by a qualified professional as above the seasonal high water table. And the reason for that is, I don't want tanks pop, popping up out of the ground. Um.
David, what if somebody wants to, you know, pour concrete? Basically, they want to strap it, strap it?
Um, we could add that, um, I was trying to keep it.
I don't know if we want that, but that's.
Fairly simple.
I, I would really recommend doing something like that, because the seasonal high water table is very close to the surface in a lot of areas where there's clay.
Yeah, well, that's sort of the other reason, that might feel, then, if you have a seasonal high water table where you're gonna have water around the tank. Um, then might not be a good idea to allow it there.
Well, I mean, it's all of that flat area north of town along Hartford Road. The seasonal high water table is about six inches under the ground.
Yeah.
And, you know, all that flat farmland.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of sympathize with what he, he be saying, and that, um, it's also. Who, who is? Um. I think there's, s- subject to interpretation by qualified professionals. As to what the seasonal high water table is, and so.
Yeah, I was trying to make it a little less onerous. The relationship between that is in a wetland. Right?
Um, well, no, it's just, it's just where the, the. I, I mean, the bottom of the tank is gonna be at least four feet down, I would presume.
Yeah, cause you can have a.
And so, I mean, there are many places that, that, uh, you.
Yeah.
You know, you can't have a septic system within cer, you know, with water within a certain number of feet of the, of the surface, and. There are many places that. You know? You can't necessarily have a septic system, but I'm not, I'm not sure that that would preclude you, or should preclude you from having a propane tank.
It, my intent on this was, I don't want this in bobbing to the surface. You know, that, that, you know, ripping the lines out. Um.
Well, maybe, but that's why.
Language, it would, to the effect that.
The tank would have to be secured. In, in some way so that it wouldn't.
How? What, what would you want me to, as the zoning administrator?
I know, it's.
What would you want me to, to enforce?
I think what they do though, don't they pour a concrete slab, and then they put.
How, how to go concrete slab?
Well, no, I mean, it's.
Well, I think it would be designed by a professional.
Yeah.
That, that if the seasonal water table is.
Yeah, and, and that's.
X number.
That's where I'm trying to get to, that we need to have a, you know.
Right.
Somebody who knows, um, what they're doing, because, uh. If you look at the, the FEMA regulations for burying propane tanks in flood zones.
Uh huh.
Uh, you have to ensure that the, um. Cement that you're putting down is actually hit greater in weight than the buoyancy of the tank.
Right.
So, you know, it, this needs to be something that has to be engineered, it's not something that, and, again, I was trying to. Keep this somewhat simple.
Yeah.
Um, and say, if it's above the seasonal high water table, then no. Um, but we can add language, and I, I can try to rewrite some language to, um. Indicate that this needs to be an engineered. Um.
Whatever the FEMA regs are.
Well, it's not, the FEMA regs don't have an engineering requirement, their requirement is that it, um, is. Uh. More, the, the amount of concrete weighs more than the buoyancy of the tank. And that the tank is strapped down to the.
Yeah.
Um. I am not qualified to make those, uh, calculations, so. I, as a zoning administrator, would require, you know, engineering.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, most of the.
Is that why you said qualified professional? Right. As your engineer? Yeah, and the reason I didn't say engineer is because a septic designer.
Yeah.
Is perfectly qualified to determine seasonal high water table, and would probably be a lot less expensive than calling out a engineer. Um, to.
And there's just so much I can tell you, I mean, I've dug test pits for septic systems around the upper belly, and. You come back a month later and there's like frogs in it, because the, the water just never goes anywhere, so, you know? The seasonal high water is a hard thing.
I don't know what the companies do, you know, like. Irving and all these people that put in their own tanks, cause they, they own the tank. I don't know what, I mean, even think that they would do it the right way, you know, if they own the tank and they put it in.
You, you are able to buy your own tank.
Right.
And you could put it underground yourself.
Yeah.
And so there's no guarantee that a.
True, why are you saying?
Qualified.
Yeah.
Company is going to.
No, that's very true, that's very true. Yeah.
No, I think we just need language that says it's, you know, qualified professional.
Yeah.
Designed so that any issues about seasonal high water.
Here, so the tank isn't.
Sorry, it's a fruit fly, finally got it.
Yeah, this, this room is infested with.
Yeah, I don't know, the whole building is. We've had, I've. Had my lunchbox open today, and I went to close it, and they all.
Geez.
It's like, it's empty, guys.
Um. Yeah, well, some kind of language.
Uh. Yeah, I, I mean, um, when, um, Michael Hensley came in, uh, he referenced some sort of. Professional design, um, and so I wonder if we can get that. That qualification from him.
I can talk to him and find out if there's something in particular, um.
Some good language?
Yeah.
You might want to put something in there about. Checking this, the seasonal high water level, because. You know, somebody might not even think about that, and just put the tank in.
Well, that's why I.
It's not obvious.
That's why I said the elevation of the bottom tank shall be certified by a qualified professional above the seasonal high water table.
Oh, okay.
So that was. Uh, that would. You know, before I, um, basically before I given approvals for the tank, I would, um. Say, you know, give me a letter from somebody who is qualified to say.
Where that is.
Yeah, that this is above that seasonal high water.
But I guess what I was trying to get at is, and maybe this isn't a problem, but. You know, there may be a place where you wouldn't even think about the seasonal high water table being there, you know, being very high.
Yeah.
And it might actually be, so are we saying that every?
No, we're just saying, within the shoreline, we're only dealing with.
But these are just shoreline.
I mean, if Rusty decided he wanted to bury a. A propane tank, he would be in the seasonal high water table, he would be above it, or the tank would be below it, I mean, that's, that field has. Is, the, the water table is not very far below it.
Uh huh.
Um.
You dig down and you can see a profile of where the water has been coming up, you know, there's brown soil, and then there's sort of gray soil with deposited salts.
Yeah.
Below, so it's very clear where the high water table is. And it's very close to the surface in a lot, I mean, there's so much alluvial plain, clay.
Yeah.
Through here where the Connecticut River used to flood it up, so that I think that we just, just to be realistic about. Coping nicely with the shoreline district.
So how about if we modify number two that says, the, the elevation. Of the bottom of the tag, uh. The, the elevation of sea, the seasonal high water table shall be certified by a qualified professional.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was sort of getting at, I think, that.
And then.
Are we gonna require that for every single tank in the?
This is just in, just in the shoreline district.
So we're gonna require that. If you bring a tank in the shoreline district, you have to get somebody to tell you where the seasonal high water.
And then.
Okay.
And then. Um, and then the tank installation. Shall be designed by, we have to figure out. What.
Somebody that knows what they're doing.
By a qualified professional.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that clears it up then, if we say every, every single tank in there has to, that's sort of what I was trying to get at, that. Somebody might.
Is the bottom of the tank sufficient to clarify the lowest point of the tank? Man, are the tanks sometimes bent sideways or?
No, they're, there's.
Well, yeah, that, they're, they're put in horizontally, probably, so.
There's the submarine kind, and then there's the.
Yeah, I don't know. But the, but we're.
Rather than say bottom, maybe just say the lowest.
The lowest elevation?
Yeah, the lowest elevation of the tank.
Do we?
Yes.
Don't mean to throw a spanner in the works, but that. Property that we used to live at, uh, in Orford, on Orford Road.
It's for sale.
It's for sale for a million dollars, thank you very much, God bless them.
They haven't sold it yet.
But that's not shoreline. That's rural.
Right.
And the seasonal high water table is six inches below the surface. So, I mean, if somebody wanted to bury a propane tank there.
Maybe they already have one.
I'm not sure what, but I'm just wondering.
The, we're, we're looking to protect the, um, the water bodies within the shoreline district, I think. The bodies of water.
Yeah, so if you're in the rural district, you're on your own, I guess.
Yep, and, yeah, I, I would be perfectly happy to have the board.
I'm just checking in.
The rules to, every propane tank in town, if you bury it, it has to be above the high water table or. Um, but, you know, again.
Yeah, but you can't require every, every single tank to.
I, I understand that, but it's, um.
But it wouldn't be a bad idea to have them designed by. A, a professional.
Yeah.
Um. But I, I don't think we should focus on. On the shoreline.
Yeah.
District.
It's fine, I just leave in worrying about things.
Yeah. So what do we have now, the seasonal high water table shall.
The elevation of the lowest point, lowest part of the tank?
Well, please, one at a time, cause I'm trying to write this down.
You can't write with two hands, David.
I'm trying to write it so I can actually read it again in the future, and.
I think you're saying this, the elevation of the seasonal high water table shall be certified by qualified professional.
Yes.
As part A.
That's part A, yeah.
Right, and then part B would be.
Right.
At the bottom of the tank, be above that. Or the lowest, lowest.
No.
Point of the tank.
No, that a, a design. If, if the seasonal high water is above the bottom of the tank, that a, a designed by a certified professional.
So it doesn't like.
So it doesn't lift up.
Right. Yeah. I was just pointing out that the bottom is a, is not as good a word as the lowest point.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
You know, it's, yeah.
Since they're buried horizontally and they look like tanks. So you make it confused about where the bottom is.
Okay.
So David, you can have a one, two, and a three?
Yeah, I think we should.
Not A, well, somebody said A and B, I think it would be easier to compare that, have a two and three.
This was two A and B.
Yeah, we could have a one, two and three instead.
Could do one, two and three.
Okay, so the first one is the elevation of the seasonal high water table shall be certified by a per. By a certified per shall be, uh, determined, determined.
Determined. No, the first one was where the conservation districts overlap.
Right, yeah.
Was the one you just said. And you can either call that two A or the two B, or you could say three.
Yeah, I think three might be clearer, but.
Yeah, and so, so three is gonna be, uh.
The elevation.
Where, where the lowest point.
Where the tank.
When the lowest point.
Lowest elevation of the tank needs to be below the seasonal high water, and leads to be above.
Or, or when the lowest elevation of the tank. Is. Below the seasonal water table.
Then you need to have.
Then you need it.
The, the tank shall be designed by.
Yes, certified.
Certified professional.
The installation should be designed by.
Yeah, the, the installation.
Yeah.
That's, that's fun, yeah, I guess you can sort of see these things being halfway into the earth, although.
Can you read that back?
Well, they, we gotta put them down low enough so that you just have that thing sticking out.
When the lowest elevation of the tank is below the seasonal high water table. The tank shall be. Designed.
The installation.
Okay, the installation.
Shall be designed by.
Is required.
Well, shall be.
To be designed by a certified.
Yeah.
I've heard say shall be, the shall is a.
Much more compelling.
Yeah, well, it's.
Yeah.
It's required.
Yes, it that, so you will do it.
Installation shall be designed by a qualified.
Or certified, maybe, qualified, yeah, I don't know.
I, I would.
Better qualified.
I would say certified because I would like to see a, an engineering stamp on it. Because you could say your, your cousin Billy Bob Bob is qualified.
Right, I could say you, you, you yourself are qualified.
Right.
But, but I mean, we're not saying it has to have an engineering stamp on it, we're just saying qualified professional, or do you want it to be?
I, I think it should be a certified professional because, um. You know, that it should have an engineering stamp on it, so that I know that the.
But a certified professional is not necessarily an engineer. That could be, I'm a certified.
But, um, the, the thing is, somebody who is certified has a state certification and they are. At risk of losing that state certification if they go beyond their bounds.
Right.
Um, you know, if you say I'm an engineer, let me perform the surgery, um, you, you're. You know, your, your certification doesn't cover that and. You know, the same thing with a, a septic designer, a septic designer can absolutely tell you where the seasonal high water line is, but. They are not going to be able to, um.
Yeah, figure out the way to the concrete.
Yeah, figure out the way to the concrete and the buoyancy of the tank.
Right.
Um, I'm sure, you know, you, with the internet, we could figure out, oh, we all could figure it out, but, um.
Ask chat G P T.
Yeah, but if you say certified professional.
Yeah.
That, again, goes back to my interpretation and, you know, if someone comes in and says. You know, here's my plan and it's on the back of a, a napkin, and I'm gonna say I don't see any certification here.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
So what do you think you have now for number three?
Okay, when the lowest elevation of the tank is below the, um, seasonal water table.
Seasonal high water.
High water, thank you. The installation of the tank shall be designed by a certified professional.
Like it.
Okay.
And then a written plan, um, what kind of a plan are we wanting?
Well, that's, um.
So that'll become number four, but, um.
Yeah, that was where, and I put it in and taken out a, a little parentheses of plan requirements.
It's an installation plan, right?
Yeah, um.
But you only want it if it was designed by a certified professional.
No, I want the fire department to, um.
Approve it.
Approve it.
Have prove you over.
Yeah, even if it's not.
Or the shoreline, well, not only.
If it's in the shoreline, and, and I'm not even sure the fire department needs to.
Well, you wouldn't say, if, if it's designed by a certified engineer, you wouldn't think they'd have to.
Well, that's only if you are below the seasonal high water table, if you dig the hole and, you know, you're in all gravel. And seasonal high water table isn't anywhere near you. Um, yeah, then, uh. You, do you still want, or would you want the fire department to review this? And this is, I'm not sure.
Well, Aaron and Michael seem to have a certain interest in it, so it, they might like to be included.
Maybe there's just some way that if somebody comes in to put a tank in, that. There's some way that you just communicate with the fire department and tell them that it's happening.
Then they know where it is too.
Um, and maybe just saying that the, for the special exception, you would need written approval of your installation plan from the fire department. And whereas you, if you're, you know, the plan is I'm gonna dig a hole and drop the tank in and bury it. And then the fire department says, great, that works for us, it's, yeah, I think they're looking at, you know, is there, uh, any danger to? Um, you know, the, the top of that tank that you need, need to install ballards or you need to.
Right.
Ballards.
Right, ballards.
Ballards.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, so they don't drive home right when they're.
Right, um, then. Yeah, but if they're, if they're looking at and say that there's no reason to, that this is a problem. And they wanna just sign off on it, so maybe just a letter from them saying, you know, we have reviewed the, the installation plan.
Yeah, so, so rather than a written plan, we should say. An installation plan shall be submitted to and approved by the line fire department.
Yeah.
The written plan, the re, the installation plan, not A.
Okay, yeah.
You want the one that they're going to use.
Oh, this is not the one we're gonna use, this is just.
Just one that we found on the internet.
We never really said that we were gonna, all of that, that's just.
That would be silly.
Yeah.
And this is only in the shoreline.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So they won't, so the fire department doesn't necessarily know about any others in town.
No, I think they.
Yeah.
We gotta keep that a secret.
Well, I mean, in theory, if they're worried about these, you know, location, they should be worried about everyone. But.
Well, we'll start out small and see if, if they.
And so then C, part two, you modified as well.
C part two, no, that's true, right?
That wasn't in the original, that's part of the new, new language, yeah, that, just, just pointing it out.
Yeah. Yes, I wanted to bury my propane tank where it is in my backyard, I would have trouble because of the seasonal high water table. Because there's, um, about three feet down the hardpan and the water sits right on top of it.
Exactly.
If you go to the front of my house, which is downhill from that, you could bury it. And the ninety feet of gravel that's underneath there, there's no. But it's that, that layer of hardpan that came down.
Yeah.
And it just, it ends right where the house is.
Right, yeah, in theory, you shouldn't put them in gravel or stone, they're supposed to have some more sand, more sand around.
Yeah, you want to put sand in the bottom of the.
Say it in the bottom of.
You don't want them to grind.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You don't wanna put them in a stone, you know, with a stone and stuff.
Okay.
It's great seeing the red. Good.
Yeah, well, I, I, we also have to have a public hearing and I will modify the language for the next meeting. And then, um.
Good.
Cue it back to the board and hopefully there'll be more board members to.
Yeah.
Pick it apart and.
So we know that this is, this is the, I, I feel bad saying this, this is the one that we really have to get done. Sadly, I'm not sure how many others we will be able to. Have ready, um, if any, um, for this town meeting.
Yes, I don't think because of.
And certainly, we're looking at some input from our survey for. It kinda feels like we need some survey.
The suggestions, modifications to that table, was it table four? The long, they, to make the more list of uses more inclusive, that might be non con contentious.
Perhaps, yeah.
Um, but in, after this meeting, you have five meetings before the end of the year.
And that's the day, yeah, when is the last point we can put something in for a town meeting?
Um, it's gonna be in January, I think, or it may be early, early February, but you may have. A little bit, again, you have to have public hearings prior to that, so. Um, it's looking like.
Yeah, I was hoping we could pick one other that we might have.
What happened to the one that I submitted, the, um.
Yeah, which one was that?
Yeah, that, that's the transient, um. Yeah.
You might wanna work on at least the definitions from what you and, and try to put some of the definitions into. The article two.
I think I had definitely.
Yeah, right here, I got it right here. I think those are your definitions.
And that would be at least a step forward, you may not have any language to enforce any of them, but you would have those added to the.
Yeah, cause the other things we were talking about was steep slopes, agricultural soil.
Yeah, I, I've been looking at the steep slopes, I've been trying to find wording and I am really struggling, um.
Well, you and I had talked about agricultural soil, we sort of maybe came up with a solution.
Yeah, but that, that is going to, that's not something that we're gonna be able to hash out in five meetings.
Right, right.
Um, there is a lot to, because I think the, um. It's two parts where you, you know, you, you're taking it out of the subdivision regulations or taking out the zoning audits. And putting a lot of it in the subdivision regulations.
Right.
And you need to make sure that you.
Yeah, we won't get that this year, so yeah.
Do both of those at the same time and have the language worked out so that you can, if it passes, then you can immediately. Fix the subdivision regulations and.
Yeah, cause basically we were gonna have a designated area for the building.
Right, and basically, um, instead of saying that the zoning board had to figure out. Um, something that really is not possible for them to figure out, you would do it at the time of subdivision.
Right, and have a designated building envelope and then it's all done.
It's all done and all the, the people doing the subdivision know about it all ahead of time, anybody, anybody buying the property.
It goes on the, does it goes on the deep?
It goes on the plat.
On the plat, yeah.
And, and so though, all those restrictions are there and in place and everybody has that information upfront, nobody gets surprises.
Yeah.
I guess that'll work, yeah, well, but.
So I think, sounds like the Nats definitions might work.
So I, I was, uh, not here when.
Definitions on a table, in a, um. Yes, the, um, the uses to.
So, so I had, I, I guess I, I'm questioning. Uh, I, I appreciate what you have, uh, put together now, I'm questioning if. If we can come up with a simpler. Approach and what is, is that we're actually trying to do and, and the reason I'm asking is. Cause I use this thing A one that Linda McMahon talked about, you know, this new technology A one.
A I.
A I.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, and so Google, Google, uh, tells me, uh, a def, gives me a definition of transient. That I thought was pretty simple, it refers to temporary occupancy of a dwelling unit, typically for its, uh, short duration. And then it goes on to talk about, um, you know, some ordinances in the state of New Hampshire. Um, and. Um, you know, they, they sometimes, uh, ordinance specifically, you know, specify it to. Um, less than thirty days or, uh, some, sometimes it's between one and fourteen consecutive nights.
Right, that was my first definition.
So, um. I, I wasn't quite understanding where all of these things would fit into our zoning ordinance.
The, the idea was that, the distinction we wanted to make was between, um. Non-transient and transient.
Yeah.
Um, and there are a number of different types of. What would you call it, uh, facilities that are transient? And then there are a number that are non-transient, and then there are some that are, that, that blur the lines. So that's why I, um, and, and we have most of them. Um. You know, in town or. I guess I could pull out anyone that wasn't in town, but why would I do that? It must, they might wanna have one.
Okay.
Um, so the, the list is, you know, somewhat exhaustive. But it's, but it's not sort of arbitrarily exhaustive, it was sort of based on, on Hanover.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and their, um, their, um. Um, zoning ordinance.
Uh-huh.
Um, they, they go through each, each district. They don't do it with a table like we do, but they, they may have a table, but they basically go through each district to talk about the uses. And talk about, yeah, talk about the uses and, and, uh. Before they do that, they define all of the different uses as, you know, one of the elements of the definition is, is a transient or non-transient. Or both.
Yeah, cause we got.
So I, I guess I didn't feel like, I felt like, yeah, it's possible that this is too, too comprehensive. But on the other hand, I figured I'd let you guys decide what was too comprehensive and what wasn't, um.
But this all came up with Laura, right, because he, he was trying to say he was transient and obviously he wasn't.
Right, but you can imagine other scenarios.
But if we define tran, if we have a real definition of transient, then it's clear.
Yeah.
Right, so there's no question, I mean.
And I think that's the issue right now, is that there's no, um, time limit on transient in.
Well, we just don't have.
How, how were ordinances defined, how you're supposed to use the term transient, if we put a definition of transient, how do they? How do they define it?
Well, I, I forget.
Well, I mean, I think it's just comes up in the lodging accommoda, definition of lodging accommodations. And that's where it says overnight quarters provided to transient guests. And then it blows my mind how, what the rest of it says, it says, which could include. As site plan review, colon, accessory uses such as meal preparation. Meal service and functions such as weddings, meetings and reunions. So, uh, what the heck does that mean?
Well.
I, I think what it's saying is that by type plan review, you could, um, add all those things after the colon. Um, so you, but you would just add it to your, whatever your transient, there'd be an accessory use of transient housing.
Right, so let's say we'd said it was fourteen days, so somebody's renting for fourteen days or less, so it's like a motel or a whatever. And so then we could say, but with site plan review, you could say that they had this motel, but they could also serve meals. And, and they could have weddings and whatever.
Weddings and reunions and meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it would have to be less, fourteen days or less.
But suppose, I mean, there's nothing that says a hotel can't take somebody for more than thirty days.
Look at the, so, so hotels in New York City, people used to live there.
No, that's true.
I mean, so, so, so can something be both transient and non-transient?
I don't know how we do that.
I mean, basically, you're defining lodging and accommodations then as being transient. And you're defining transient as less than thirty days, okay, so that, what happens with the guest that stays longer?
Right.
Does that change the whole classification of the building? And, and if so, what, you know, how do we? Um, I mean, it seems to me we have to go through these various buildings and saying, this one can blur the lines, it's a hotel. And, and still be classified as an accommodation, but if it's a bed and breakfast, then it cannot.
Well, I thi, I think, I think by definition, it, a hotel, you, it, a hotel is not an extended stay place. For over thirty days, you just can't do it.
But it could be.
Well, no, it can't, if we say.
We say can't.
I mean, I, I don't think we have an issue right now of any, of any of our. Other lodging facilities keeping people for more than thirty days.
Yeah, we do, we have that, uh, whatever that thing is up in, right down the street here or there. You know, that.
What?
That cognitive, neurocognitive, uh.
Residents.
Residents.
Right, right, right here.
Yeah, but they're long term.
They are long term, yeah.
But it's not a hotel, is there a hotel instead?
No, but it is something, uh. And the issue is, i- it is lodging, right?
Um, it's, it's like an institution, sort of.
Uh, well, I don't, I don't know, it, it would, it would sort of come under, I don't know, rooming house or. Or, or assisted living, you know, um.
Yeah.
What is assisted living, is that not lodging in Latin English?
No.
But what is assisted living?
Uh, I don't know.
What would it be called?
I don't, I don't know.
Right, alright, so this, this is why I made it comprehensive, because there are lots of different, uh, potential. Right, alright, so this this is why I made it comprehensive, because there are lots of different uh potential.
Scenarios.
Scenario.
Yeah.
And and they, and each one of them can be either transient, non transient or both. Um, like a rehab facility can be transient and it's it's sort of a system living. You know, we don't, I don't think we have any rehab facilities here, um, but good.
What happens, David, if we, if somebody comes in with something and we don't know what it is? Can we say, what's that?
It's not allowed.
Yeah, so so.
Why I was doing this.
Um, so so in that case, uh, you know, rehab facility just wouldn't be allowed?
Yeah, they would come in and I would, that they hit me for first for building permit, I go through table four one. And I look through here and says, is there anything in here that um. Looks like a rehab facility and um.
Lodging and accommodations.
Yeah, lodging and accommodations is the.
The only thing that looks like.
The only thing looks like it, you know, certainly not a clinic.
No, it's an inpatient.
And clinics specifically said outpatient, so like I said, this one, I'm not sure what that is.
Right, and yet it's already here, so we can't say it's not allowed, somebody's got it.
Did it come before zoning?
Well, that's a good question, that's one of the reasons zoning got passed, I don't know if you all knew, when you hear that one, cause the zoning. We put it up, I think in eighty, no, in eighty eight, we put it before the town meeting, before town meeting, and it was turned down, zoning was turned down. So those of us on the planning board had to stand up at the next town meeting and explain different sections of the zoning. But that was at the same time that Bruce Pack was trying to build that facility there. And everybody in town, not everybody, but people in town were saying, oh my God, we have no control over this, what's this gonna be? You know, this is, we don't know what these people are gonna be doing and they're gonna be murdering people, so that kind of pushed the vote for zoning. It's kind of.
And yet it was never applied to that building.
Well, I can't remember what the timing was, it might, it might have been before zoning.
No, it was before zoning because I remember making a gingerbread house of it.
Really? Yeah, so it got in just before, you know, it was there before zoning, but that's.
Wouldn't have inspired to at least. Have included what it was in the zone.
Probably.
And and.
Yeah.
But but David saying it just wouldn't be, it wouldn't be allowed, sorry, it's not allowed here.
Yeah.
And and so they go someplace else.
Yeah, I would not be, you know, look at the table and say, very sorry, but there is no. Nothing that that falls under that I can.
Okay, so it does seem to me then that we should go through these and decide what should be allowed here, even if we don't have it. And.
Right.
What should not, and whatever could conceivably be allowed here. Uh, should probably be defined and and categorized in terms of transient or non transient. And whatever is grandfathered but is not allowed. I guess cannot be mentioned, although it does increase the confusion of the whole thing, which is what we're trying to avoid with this rewrite. So, I don't, uh, you tell me what's the right thing to do.
I mean, there's plenty of examples of of non complying um existing uses.
Right.
And I think it's generally, I think it's indicated that once that use is gone. For a a certain period of time, then it's not allowed to come back.
But if it's learned shut down for two years, then somebody buying the property would not be able to. Bring it back.
You mean have a.
If if we had.
Right, if we had, if right now.
If we change the definition of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then.
And no new facilities like that could also, could either, could.
I mean, where you're renting, where you're renting rooms.
Okay, so, well, so just to make this a little quicker, um. What would you like to see on the, in the table? That would just, just things that already exist in town or be prepared to go through the list and say. You know, which things.
He had a whole list, I don't know.
Or you already got it?
No, but from, you're talking about the table that.
I'm talking about my table.
We're talking just about.
I'm talking about lodging and accommodation specific uses, you know, within lodging and accommodations.
I I personally would like to see definitions of everything that's out there. Um, whether you uh put them into table uh four one.
No, I would only put the ones in the table four one.
That you.
If that we would entertain.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but that way, there's a definition of them. And so, you know, you.
Come in and David can say, well, that's not allowed.
Yeah, I can say, okay, this is what you're proposing, this is, that is not in this table, it's not allowed.
Okay, um, then then what would we allow? What needs to be, uh, if I look at this.
I don't have my copy of that.
If I look at this table. Um, in hotels, bed and breakfast. Okay, so I'm assuming that I need to define all three of those and that, you know, we would entertain all three.
Well, we might not, I I'm not sure I'd entertain a hotel.
Well, also you have different districts and.
Yeah, what if you, we can put in just certain districts, don't we?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I think of a hotel, I think of, you know, the Marriott.
Yeah.
I don't think of Dow's Country Inn as a hotel, it's an inn.
Okay.
Oh, my goodness. Difference between an inn and a hotel?
Well, I mean, you we, i- if if it's different, if it's actually stated, an inn versus a hotel, then what what what?
It's the difference is small scale, limited number of rooms, often four to twenty. May include meals, often owner managed or onsite operator, hotel, larger scale, private rooms, on suite baths. May include restaurant, concierge, conference services. Um, so both are, both are considered, um, in this are considered transient.
So more than twenty rooms we're staying in a hotel, less than twenty is an inn and more than twenty is a hotel.
I could do that?
No, 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 I think, just getting clear. What's what?
So the question is, do we want something with more than twenty rooms? Do we want something with fifty rooms in it? We want something with.
Of course without, without town.
How many rooms does uh, does. You uh lie in or don't?
I have no idea.
I should not.
I will guess, I will guess it's less.
Doesn't matter, both.
Oh yeah, but I mean, that that gives us a sense of scale if we were to find that out.
I think the line is about twelve, maybe, I'm guessing, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they have a huge, I think Dow's, you know, that long.
Yeah, they have an extension out the back.
Yeah, there's quite a few rooms.
Yeah.
So those are, those are three, what else is on the list?
Um, bed and breakfast. Um, oh, I did that one, uh, excuse me, uh, hosted, short term, sorry, wrong table. Yeah, hosted, short term rental. Um. By that, I am thinking uh a rented ADU. Like, no, no, like a bed, a, an Airbnb ADU.
Yeah. Right.
I think we're starting to get into. Too much complexity for the time.
That. Or before we'd have to submit something to the town.
Yeah, and I and I also feel like. Well, there could be a lot of controversy on.
I mean, you have Airbnbs, but they're, the people don't live on site.
Right. And down the River Road, there's that, what is that? That's like an apartment building or something, that house on the River Road. There's always about five or six cars, you know, you know what that is, David?
I'm not familiar with it.
I think they ran it.
Are you talking south of the Setford Bridge?
Yes.
Yeah, is it southern?
Yeah.
Yes, the one that, yeah.
Yeah.
And I I never knew what that was, I would, I guess it's like a, I don't think, rooms or apartments, it must be apartment.
Yeah, I mean, I, it could be college housing, you know, law students or something.
We can, we can look it up in vision.
Yeah.
Anyway.
What's what's another?
Well, then there's uh just hosted and unhosted short term rentals. Um, and um, I guess they are both Airbnbs, one is an Airbnb. Of a presumably an A and U, and the other is a pre standing Airbnb.
I've seen where.
That is.
You, um, have somebody, you you own your house and you put um a couple of bedrooms. Up for into Airbnb and people come in, they stay in the bedrooms, you you're living in the house also.
Right, it says an additional use of a one family owner occupied dwelling where the owner. Has vacated the premises during the period of rental, which is less than thirty days. That was the unhosted, short term rental. Um, and then the hosted short term rental, additional use of a single family. Owner occupied dwelling where the owner is continually present on the premises during the period of rental, which is less than thirty days. So that would be that situation as well as an ADU.
Which we allow now, right?
We don't disallow.
We just don't disallow, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no real way of regulating those, um.
Right.
You know, unless you want to hire an additional person to start scouring all the uh, the ads for. Airbnbs um to try to. Find all these people, but.
Yeah, but I don't know that we'd want to.
So would we include this, would we include the definitions?
I would.
Yeah, and then in the table, would we simply say, um, this is legitimate, your use?
Yeah.
And not, and not go any further than that.
Yeah, I would just put it in table four one.
Doesn't need a site plan review or.
Right, it just.
Any sign of, because you have a right to do this.
Yes.
Whoa, 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 we're saying that you would have a right to have an Airbnb?
Well, we're allowing them.
Why are we not?
Well, we're not, we're not disallowing them, but we're not a lot, we're not endorsing them, we're just not disallowing them. I mean, I, I.
But well, I also look at it as.
What if somebody wants to have one, what are we gonna say?
Well.
They don't, they don't come in and get, they don't specifically come in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's a, it is a, it is a use which. An owner in a single family dwelling has a right to avail themselves.
No, well, I I'm just saying.
Um, I would disagree, I would agree with, um, net. I'm trying to find the right page, sorry, that was, um.
Right, but yeah, because they're here and we, we're we're not allowing them, but but just by not disallowing them, we are allowing them, really.
Right, um, under accessory uses four four two A, customary accessory uses are permitted uses which are incidental. To the principal use, uh, including single dwelling uses in conjunction with permitted business use.
Which would be an Airbnb.
Well, it's not a permitted, it's not specifically permitted, but, um.
Not disallowed.
Obviously, when I look at an accessory use, Airbnb is a customary accessory use, it's new. But it is a customary, you look all over the country.
Yeah.
And you will find Airbnbs, so it is a customary.
There are some zoning ordinances that disallow.
Absolutely, and the town could, what I'm saying, when I look at that and say, oh, somebody's doing an Airbnb. I'm looking at, it's a customary accessory use and it's, which are permitted uses.
Okay.
Um, because they are, those are. Commonly found, um, you know, if I if I have a, somebody who's doing a a, um. You know, a biology lab in their house, that's not a customary use. Um, that is something that is, you don't find. Right, although I have a friend who does it, but anyway.
If somebody wants to, wants to do an Airbnb, do they, they don't necessarily come to you?
They do not.
They don't, we don't even know.
We don't even know about it.
Yeah, you don't even know about it.
Um. And then again, until somebody, until it is, um, prohibited. I'm looking at it as, it is a customary accessory use.
Yeah, I was just listening to, just when I came in here, I was listening to somebody on NPR. Who, it was a, it was a housing, described as a housing gig. And this lady.
Oh, I think I.
Posted a condo uh to production companies as a place to do commercials.
Yeah, she's running by the hour, right?
Yeah, by the hour, yeah, hundred and twenty dollars an hour, uh, but you know, she said some people go up to five hundred dollars an hour. And um, basically she gets the call, she vacates and um. And basically they're running it by the hour, uh.
Where is she?
I think she's in Chicago.
Huh.
She must have some special place that's suitable for that kind.
I think it's, I think it's just a condo that has a look to it, it has a, it has a, I don't know, it has a lot of. Little. Uh, funny architecture that makes good posing places, you know.
When you think of spending, you know, up to five hundred dollars an hour for a space. If you were a production company and you had to um rent a studio, bring in all the set pieces. You're saving a ton of money.
Exactly, and you just use their furniture and you maybe you throw a few new pillows out and. But uh, you know, for a hundred and twenty dollars an hour, you've got, it looks lived in.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, it's a deal for everybody.
Yeah.
Well.
Alright, so anyway, I just thought I'd mention that, so the the rest of this is unhosted, short, no, excuse me, hosted, long term rental. And unhosted, long term rental, the descriptions here are. Uh, hosted, long term rental, an additional use of one family owner occupied dwelling. Where the owner is continually present on the premises during the period of the rental, which is at least thirty days. We don't actually have anything like that, do we? Do we know, but then would that be it?
You're you're saying that the owner lives there and he's got a tenant that lives there more than thirty days.
Actually, I guess this is an AD, typical ADU, this is what we want.
Yeah.
Um.
But Home on the Connecticut is that.
Would essentially that.
Okay.
Yeah, cause he.
Yeah, I sort of thought it's there, Home on the Connecticut was, was more like a rooming house, but um. And I didn't define rooming house, although I could, um, and then unhosted, additional use of a. One family owner, owner occupied. Dwelling where the owner has vacated the premises during a period of rental, which is at least thirty days. Um.
Yeah, because people.
That's something that's permitted also.
Yeah, because if a.
People go on.
Somebody goes in sabbatical and they want to rent their house.
Or they, or some people are still doing these switch houses, people in Europe, you know, for six months or something like that.
Alright.
Um. So, um, I could, so we, would I put all of those definitions in it? And I could add a rooming house or whatever we think that Lauren is. Um. Boarding house, rooming house. Um, private sleeping rooms, shared kitchen bath, usually long term tenants. But not permanent residents, often in converted homes.
You know, that's what he is.
And these are temporary residents, but not transient. In other words, nobody actually claims this as a permanent residence.
Well, now, that's very interesting.
Well, it's like renting an apartment, right?
Yeah.
Well, no, an apartment, most people do claim it's as a permanent.
Well, I think people claim Home on the Connecticut as permanent residence for purposes of voting.
Yeah, and if you're here, if you're here, for a certain amount of time, you have to change your license plates.
So I don't know how how that all goes together, but there were three or four folks who came in from Home on the Connecticut last November and. Registered to vote, same day.
Yeah, cause if you're traveling nursing here for nine months, you you're supposed to change your license plates and you're supposed to.
Yeah.
Where do they get their mail?
Beyond our scope.
Well. Well, what would I do about those then?
I know, that's the point, I think.
It's gonna be the same problem with Lockline. It's gonna be the same problem with Lockline Lodge down the road. They sell those.
No, cuz those are being sold with the upfront knowledge that they are not residential uses. That they're not residents.
But I mean.
But that's. How do you define residential?
Well, good question, but um. The units are um. Used for lodging and accommodations and that. And yes, you could run into that problem.
Yeah, that's what I meant, David, cuz like, somebody owns one, their their kid goes to Dartmouth, the kid lives in there for. The whole four years and he's at Dartmouth. In that Lockline cabin and then and so basically he's a resident.
Um, he, I mean, it could happen, um, the way they're. Um, the condo association documents say that the Lockline Lodge has the right to. Rent out the cabins whenever they want. So that kind of precludes you from being able to do that because your kid would all of a sudden on a busy summer weekend.
Oh, I think the owners have a ability to. Control that.
I thought that Lockline Lodge kept that.
Yeah, that's a good, I don't know, I don't think we know how that works, actually.
It was my understanding that Lockline Lodge reserved the right to be able to.
Need sort of like a timeshare?
Um, no, so that if they have an event going and they need to have.
Yeah, like a huge wedding and they wanna, they wanna rent some of the cabins to the people for the wedding. They say the person that owns that cabin, well, sorry, you can't be here this weekend because we're gonna use your cabin for the wedding.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I I'm not completely convinced that that's.
I mean, that seems like.
I'm not either.
That seems like.
That seems like the owners might.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like you owned it.
Yeah, but where did we hear that? That was pretty definite at one point.
That was from their lawyer.
Phil, when Phil.
When he was here, I didn't hear that, I must have missed that.
Vaguely remember something like that. Yeah, I I thought I understood that and I don't I don't know why anybody would wanna. Well, you, it's yours if if we can't rent it, but if we can rent it, then uh it's not yours. Why would you agree to send it in?
Purchase, when I was reading the real estate listings, it said. They would manage it for you and any weeks you didn't want, they would rent it for you. That was what. The real estate listing, now that may not be the contract, but that's what the real estate, I mean, that's my only source of info.
Okay, my sister has a condo that she does that with that um. They have a real estate company that rents it out and they are. Uh, my sister has to reserve particular weekends. So that it's not rented out, and if it's rented out and she wants that weekend, too bad.
Too bad, right. But that's, that's what I think, that's my understanding as well, but it doesn't mean that they can say you can't be there that week if you've already said I wanna be there.
I think that may be the, but I I think that the, that kind of prevents you from. Living there because.
Well.
You know, or you know, you, I guess you could say I I I want every single week out of the year.
Yeah.
Winterized though.
But I mean.
Well, but it would winterize it.
Oh, I see.
Anyway, I just foresee, I mean, this is beside the point, but I just foresee down the road. There's gonna be some, could be some problems there with Lockline, as far as people. Well, it could be Lockline, it could be um. But I don't. One of the ins here too.
It's any of our problem.
Well, except that we specifically said they couldn't be residences, you know, the Lockline cabins. So then if somebody's.
Well, I guess this brings up the question of whether we really wanted to find transient versus non transient. Or whether we wanted to find transient versus non transient versus residential.
Yeah, I think you need to have multiple tiers uh defining, you know. Short term. Maybe a little longer term. Even longer term and permanent. Uh, in in however terms you wanna. Do that and for whatever cases you wanna do that. So you know, you have um an Airbnb is. Uh, you you may have owner hosted short term. But then again, you may also have owner hosted. Resident, and that would be you have a uh ADU and you live in the house and you rent the ADU.
You have a lease for a year, the person has a lease for a year.
Well, and would a second home be? Would that be concerned, considered a residence?
Um, no, because you, the owner is not occupying it.
Yeah.
You mean you own two houses in town? Well, no, you own a house in California and you own a house.
Well, there are some people who own. Oh, houses on the pond and houses on the hill.
Sure.
Are there some people that I know have bought?
Dave Hewitt's moving to, gonna keep their house and move to Kendall.
Well, and Mike and Gene Smith.
Yeah, so there there are cases where. And I don't see a problem with, you know, owning a house and renting it or owning a house and.
Yeah.
Using it periodically, you know, there's.
Right, you're in one house for six months and the other house for six months.
Right.
So we would define residential as a constellation of. Of um associated um. Would you say privileges?
Is it private usage? Is that part of the definition? You know, the owner, owner uses it. Or there's only one renter. As opposed to, you know, multiple.
Or, but you, you could very easily have a house where I live in. I come up in the summertime, live here in the summer, in the wintertime, I go to Florida and I rented to a student. For the winter.
Well, suppose we said that it is. It is the address on your driver's license, it is the dress on your voter res- registration. And it is the address at which you receive mail. Then you had to have that constellation of of um.
But I can't ask for that information.
No, David can't enforce it.
So to say, you know.
Well, if we can't enforce it, then there's no point in even bringing it up then.
Well, like I said, I can't ask for somebody's driver's license, I can't ask for mail. I can't ask for their voter registration information.
But somehow you get the mail information. You said um.
I. Find out sometimes through other channels that. But it's not something that I can constantly, I, there's no way I can.
Get officially.
Right, um, you know, if I. If if I get a question from the town clerk's office about an address. Or somebody is, or I get a question from the post office saying, um, you know, we're getting mail for this. Person, this, does this address exist? They will. And there, it's not an address that they have, because the town assigns all the addresses. Not the post office. And so if the post office has a question, they will call us and say what's going on. And so, yes, I will find out through other means, but.
Well, this is getting complicated.
Yeah.
I I, it's complicated, I'm just wondering if we should. Try to, whether we should try to head things off at the pass so that we don't have other. Um, Home on the Connecticut's um. Turning up.
Why is Home on the Connecticut so bad?
Uh, it's a good question.
And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be argumentative or just.
Well, I mean, we kept saying we like what he's doing.
Yeah, we sort of liked what he was. We just didn't like the way he did. That was their problem, but now what if somebody wanted to build a new. A new facility like that. You know, were they, is that allowed?
Yes.
I mean, it's almost like Panview in a way.
Is it allowed? Where is it allowed?
It would be lodging and accommodation.
And where is that allowed?
Does that.
Everywhere.
Does, does, does lodging accommodations? Um, does the definition of en suite versus common bathrooms?
Has nothing to do with any of that.
Nothing, there's no, that's not part of the definition.
But so if you wanted to do a bed and breakfast at your house, you want to convert your house to a bed and breakfast, you'd go through a site plan review. And.
Right.
That would be. You know, as long as you met all the regulations in the site plan. You would be able to convert your house to a bed and breakfast and then you could. Set your terms of how long people stay for as long as they want. There is no, nothing in the zoning that prevents that.
And somebody could buy a piece of land, build a whole new building to do that.
Yes.
And that would concern, that would certainly concern me, it concerned me if Dartmouth came in and said. You know, I wanna. Put it in dorm. We we wanna build a dorm.
But, but the whole problem here was that there were different codes involved. Is that not true? Between a bed and breakfast and an apartment.
Certainly, Lauren.
I think the state level definitions changed between nineteen ninety nine and now. And so since he was going now, he had been harkening back to the old. Um, B and B regulations that he was following. And now they found out about, well, they they sort of became aware of him and they want him to be now up to date.
At the state level now, is there a difference between what's required of a? Required of an apartment.
Yes, I believe that to be true.
There is.
Yes, I believe that to be true.
Okay, so.
So for the purposes of the fire marshal's office, I believe they consider that an apartment. But I don't have what their definitions are.
Okay, so.
And.
But 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 at the same time, the state. Do they take the uses from us? Do they? No, they establish their own. Yet they don't formally review all these properties necessarily.
Right.
Okay, so there's the problem, right there. Is that, is that, there's, the state is claiming a label. But they're not, they're not looking to see um. Whether somebody is in fact claiming to be that label or not.
Right, that was my question before.
And until somebody tips them off.
Because they don't have enough staff.
Off if all of a sudden there's a disconnect. Uh, between what their label is and how they're functioning at the, at the municipal level.
Right, and that, that's what I asked before, you know, I I was saying that, that the state. Requires these regulations for the barcode, but they don't, they don't check on them. And and somebody was saying, well, they don't have enough staff to do it, you know, they just don't have enough people to do it. So they they have regulations out there, this is what you have to do, but they're not.
DES is exactly the same way.
So is line, essentially.
So it doesn't really matter whether we change this transient versus non transient anyway. Because we're not the heavy, we're not the heavy here, it's the state. The state comes in, we don't, we don't care whether Lauren calls himself a bed and breakfast or not. But the state does. And um, and we don't have to be consistent with the state.
Yeah. I mean, I. It really comes down to what we want, though, in town, you know.
But we already said we want Lauren, we want Lauren, we believe in what he's doing. So the fact is, we've already sort of given approval of that, said a couple of times.
Right, but then is somebody else allowed to build the same thing?
Yeah. Why would they not be?
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I guess, take a look at. At some of the bigger communities that surround us in White River and Lebanon and. You you know, there are places that rent essentially rooms. And it's not visiting nurses that live in there. It's people who are um, you know, under stress or duress or emotional issue, have emotional issues. And. We happen to be lucky that. Lauren has a different clientele, but.
I think we're shielded because everything's so expensive.
It, we may be shielded.
We don't have any systems, we have no water system and no septic, so we're shielded from all of that. Nobody's gonna come in.
And we don't have social services.
For a year, when I first moved up here and there were people in distress and and duress.
Were they being subsidized?
I don't know.
I don't know.
About the subsidization.
I mean, was it like transitional housing, this is what they call it. Somebody, somebody subsidizes.
There are people that were transitioning from something, huh?
They were, they're transitioning usually from homelessness.
Yeah, there was a gentleman down, couple of doors down who uh. I don't, I never saw him, but he wasn't drunk.
This is consistent.
Yeah, exactly. Actually, one time he was not drunk, he asked me for a ride into Hanover. And when I gave him the ride, two hours later, he was couldn't walk. Like I dropped him off at the hospital, the old hospital. He fell out of my truck onto the ground, I reached over, grabbed the door, closed it and drove off. I was not gonna deal with that and never gave him a ride again, but.
All right.
But anyway.
Well, it's so, it would be safe to say that this is not ready for to go for a town meeting. And I, and I will take all of this into consideration and try and rework this. Although I have to, I have to redefine what my whole goal is, because now I'm not true anymore.
We tie ourselves into knots rather easily.
I mean, they tied me into knots.
Me too.
And I thought I knew what I was doing and now I, now I don't.
Well, it seems to me if we decide that we're gonna allow something. Then we should have a way to define it. You know, instead of just saying, well, it's allowed, but we don't, or we don't disallow it, you know. Right, so isn't that sort of the basic, if we had decided that, okay, this is okay, we will have it town, and maybe we wanna say only in certain districts. Uh, kinds of, you know, but. But then we should have some way to explain it or decide and define it.
The the problem, the the reason probably needs to be clarified is exactly what happened with Lauren. Because Lauren is is sitting there saying, look, you told me I'm a bed and breakfast, you just approved me as a. You know, you just passed me through and, you know, gave me the okay. As a bed and breakfast and now you're telling me that I'm not a bed and breakfast, but nothing's changed.
Right.
Nothing's changed.
But it wasn't us.
And.
Did we tell him?
But but we did make our approval contingent on him fixing that anyway, okay? And so we, we actually committed the original sin. You know, we jumped in and said, okay, we're siding with the state. So does that mean all of a sudden then that we have to make all of our. Our uh ordinances or our descriptions, definitions and what we permit. You know, uh, basically uh tied to. What, how the state looks at things.
That would certainly help.
Do we need to do that? And if we do, then isn't that going to be a much bigger issue? I mean, we're gonna have to actually. I mean, where does, where does the state even put all, is these all RSAs? Yeah.
It's um.
Or is it building code?
It's, a lot of it is building and fire codes, as interpreted by the inspector at the time.
But the foundation of all of them, but the foundation of all of them is in RSAs.
But the the foundation would be that the the um, Dan in Hampshire has um. Accepted the hand, the uh National Fire Code or the National Building Code or National Electric Code.
Right.
And then the individual organizations are allowed to make up their own regulations. Which, you know, DES has gotten in trouble several times. For overstepping their bounds where, you know, the state says you get to write your own regulations, they write them and then the legislature says, yeah, no, that's not. That doesn't fly.
Would it, would it be sufficient to simply, to simply put at the end of any definition? That you're compliant with the state. Fire, building codes. Compliant with the state for, for your, for this use. Yeah, but not building codes that, because we have no building inspector. In other words, somebody can build a house, they can build their own house and do all their own wiring and all their own flowing. They don't have to have, you know, any. Okay, fire codes. Yeah, maybe, maybe fire codes, but the state doesn't, it sounds like the state doesn't enforce them anyway.
No, the state does not unless the, the only time the state is going to come in and. Enforce any fire codes is if the local fire chief says, hey, I have a problem, I need you to come do this.
Okay, so this isn't, this is, this is completely.
Yeah, and, and then the, the, yeah, that's if they agree to come do it.
So this is, it actually what happened with Lauren then is actually completely by the books.
Yes.
So even though, even though it just felt so. So wrong, uh, it was all completely by the books. Was exactly the way it should have happened. Well, we shouldn't have said he was transient, that was.
But what else?
Nobody did say he was transient, but, but except Lauren, and Lauren still contends that he's transient.
He's still.
The only person who, the only person who said he wasn't transient was the fire chief, our fire chief. Right, but we. And the fire marshal took his word for it and, and Lauren still argues that point. Right, but. But you know he's lying, you know he's lying. The planning board should not have said that he had, he was at transient. Why should we not? Cause he doesn't, right?
Well, under the definition.
How do we know?
There's no, the definition is not clear enough to.
Yeah, I suppose so, but okay.
Well, we're going around circles and I have a couple more things that I wanna just.
Larger.
Yeah.
Pointing fingers at the state.
We're circling down the drain.
It's, it's those other people.
If I can come in just real quickly on, since we're talking about Lauren, um, I do have another plan for access. Uh, that both the fire chief uh from Lime and Hanover have reviewed and prefer. No, that's not it anymore. Um, they actually want to go around the backside of the building and then down.
And it has less bumps in it?
Yep, um, it's still, crosses steep slopes and still going to have to get reviewed by the planning board. But when you consider that you, as the board, told him he had to work with the fire chief.
Right, sure.
Around behind, but the property line is there.
Uh, no, you're coming around this way.
Oh, good lord.
So which way?
Jesus.
Looking at the map.
Going all the way down around here.
Here?
But there's a property line there.
What? Oh, this is the property line with the Zanovich, you mean? But isn't there some right of way or something like that with that property line?
But it's for, it's for Tasanovic.
Go this way, yeah.
Oh, you mean it's his right?
Well, the, the, we don't have something for tonight, so I'd rather.
Look.
This is the.
Blue line.
The blue line.
Oh, really? So coming way out there.
Yep.
What's this purple line?
Blue line, that's, can, just look at the blue line.
But is that, is that, that's going down through a steep slope?
There's, there's not across a property line, Hibi?
No, 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 I, I thought he was coming further out, wastewater line, yeah.
Steep slope basically is in this area.
Yeah, the driveway size.
Where, where is it?
Uh, if you look at my mouse, this whole area through here on this side, so you're basically cutting across the slope. To get down here.
You're sort of stopping yourself into the hillside.
Yeah, we're. So we're providing them a driveway to build more buildings on steep slopes, is that all?
Oh, no, you're not, because you would not be able to build. Uh, on the steep slopes.
Really? So is, this is going to actually be an open. A path for him, for vehicles?
Yes.
And, and, but not parking?
Not parking.
It's.
The, the, the purpose of it is to.
Be free for a fire.
Right, that is, the, the purpose of it is to be able to allow fire apparatus to get down to those other buildings.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty. He's got two units in that one building on the river, right?
I think so, yeah.
That's that red.
The, the red is the barn and then if we.
No, the red that's right up here, yeah, that.
And then you approve two units of this one also.
Yeah.
So where, where is, yeah, the cottage, so how did people used to get down to the cottage?
The green lot, the green driveway.
It was just a straight shot, this guy from Connecticut used to own that.
And it was, it also goes through, through steep slopes. But it is, it doesn't meet any of the requirements of.
Cause it wasn't a living space.
Well, no, it doesn't meet the requirements of driveways, cause it was put in before.
And the problem is you can't get a fire truck down.
In this way, you will be able to get any of the um Lime or Hanover fire apparatus down.
This, I say tough nuggets.
Well, that's, what's your, uh, your solution for him then?
The fire department already approved it. Didn't they?
But you as a board told him to work with the fire department to come up with a parking plan and access plan. In your last decision.
Uh huh.
And so saying tough nuggets is, you, you've already said you have to do this.
No, but we, when we approved the, when we approved the, the condo thing there. We approved that and we didn't have a condition on it at that.
At that point, but the fire department did, has.
Has now gotten involved.
Has now gotten involved and said, we have a problem.
Well, should we just ask for a letter from the fire department that says there's really no other way of doing this?
Yeah, I, I'd be happy to ask for that.
I mean, if we had that, then I think that's a perfectly reasonable, I mean, we often use that as a, as an excuse for.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm serious about, I just question why we have steep zones and then we allow them and then. The next thing you know, if it's not Lauren, it'll be somebody else, they'll say, well, I'm gonna build a, um, you know, twenty seven more units, all of that.
Board says, no, you, you know, he could build twenty seven more units going out.
Yeah.
Where it's not steep, um.
So where's the river? The river's right here.
No, the river, the river's further back.
Here?
Way up.
Really? I thought this was right.
No, that's not right on the river. Yeah, it's also out of the flood plain.
So initially this fire department was saying this was okay, right?
No, the fire de, they, they wanted, the, the first one, it looped around and came in the same place. Um, the, the original.
Look at your.
Look at your plan right there.
Oh, this?
Yeah. Last, when you approved the barns, the fire department missed the fact that access was difficult.
But high center of the truck.
Yes, and that they couldn't get a truck down there. Um, they should have said something back then, they didn't.
Yeah, okay.
They have since caught that and in the last site plan review, you instructed Lauren to. Work with the fire department to come up with parking access plan that meets their requirements.
So the only, the only difference between what's on this map and this is the slopes? Cause it ends up in the same place.
Yeah, you, but you're going down over a longer distance, you're, you're.
Right, so it's not as steep.
Right, it's not as steep.
Okay.
And, yes, you, the, the reason that you allow driveways on steep slopes under, by special exception. And then the board is not, this board is not going to say yes or no, you can do this, you're going to review it and you're gonna provide comment to the zoning board. The zoning board is going to be the ones making the decision.
Right, and they often give a, a variance.
Or a special exception.
A special exception if there's no other way to do it.
If there's no other way, and you know, a letter from the fire department saying this is the best access is probably going to.
Carry the day.
Carry the day over, we don't like it. So.
Or it's not our problem.
Right, you know, and especially with the fact that the board instructed him to work with. The, you know, there, there is no way of getting down there without crossing steep slopes.
Yeah.
There, there is no way of doing it. Um, the green, the original driveway, it's far steeper, it goes through steep slopes. This just gives them a, a much cleaner route that they can take any of the equipment down. But anyway, I will get that for you for the next meeting. Um, I will give you some slope maps that I created to show where the steep slopes are. Um, I don't have a way of overlaying them, um.
So we, don't we need to deal with the minutes from the last meeting?
Well, I, I, I'd rather um put that off till the next meeting, but um. I, I'm not gonna be here the next meeting and so we didn't get to the housing survey discussion. Um.
Well, we were, I was just gonna say, you're not gonna be here, unfortunately, I'm not gonna be here, Vicky's not gonna be here the next meeting. So we were thinking that it might be wise to try to change that meeting if we can. So that, and I'm not sure when Vicky's coming back, but um, which should be nice if we could change the meeting so we have everybody here.
Yeah.
I bet she'll be back, I mean, otherwise, yeah, no, no trip down the canyon, it's gonna be six weeks long. So if we had that meeting sometime after the twenty fifth, it might be able to catch all of us.
The following Thursday is the second of October. I'll be back then.
I'll certainly be here.
Does that work for others?
I think so.
Hang on a second, let me.
Does that work for you, David?
That works for me.
So we're sitting on the eleventh and you're guys, you're both gonna be the, gone the twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm usually never gone, but this is just happening to me.
You've gone a lot, Tim, I think.
I was gone for five years, I never missed.
Lay it on him, Dave. What's up with these people who don't work and they're always gone?
Vicky, I'd be the same thing.
I never, to never go anywhere.
There, there must be something about the stage of life or something. Our asses off the whole time, and we finally get retired, we have to be here two, two days a month.
The last weekend, I know we helped him close the house, anyway.
I'm gonna be gone for a long time in January.
When are you leaving?
I just tell you.
Right.
I am leaving the twenty third.
I couldn't miss both two meetings.
Yeah, so we could do, we could do uh the twenty second, a Monday night.
Uh, I couldn't do that.
No, but Vicky won't be here then.
And you can't do it the twenty third?
No.
Okay, no, because the room is.
It should be after.
Going to be taken by the zoning board because everybody at the zoning board has been gone and.
The Vicky will be here, if we're gonna change the meeting, it would be nice to be able to catch Vicky, you know, all of us.
Well, she, she didn't say she was gonna be gone for the twenty fifth.
Yes.
She did?
Yep.
I think she.
She said she was gonna miss both meetings in.
September.
September.
Gotcha.
So, but I, we're thinking that if we can have it just a little bit after the twenty fifth, she, hopefully she'll be back.
The second, you're saying, was a Thursday. Fine by me.
October second, okay. And then we have to have a meeting two in a row, one week and then one the next week.
Yeah.
And then the following week is, I'm having my hip replaced the next morning, so I don't know.
I'm traveling for a wedding on the ninth.
You might not be up for it.
I might, I might not, but then again, maybe it'd be a good distraction.
What's, what's happening?
I'm getting a new knee on the tenth.
Oh.
Um.
Oh, yeah, but that, you'll be, it, it only takes three or four hours and you're back walking around.
That's right, is Sparky, Sparky gonna take care of you?
He's gonna take care of me.
That's what you told me, but I think my hip was, the, and the meeting was the day after my hip replacement, and you said, yeah, you'll be fine. No, hips are different.
You won't remember a thing you said.
No, knees, knees are easier than hips.
I was in the OR.
Hips are easier than.
I was in the OR at seven AM and eating pizza in my living room at six thirty that night.
Yeah, they tried to get you out.
It's very, don't spend the night, cause the alarm bells will make you crazy.
Yeah, my friend had, he spent the night and he was.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think.
Did you get this?
It's included in, I put it in, he sent it to me and I put it in.
Soon you give it to me, she, but I sent it directly to her and it's in the, what I sent out.
So the other thing is Community Care of Lime has contacted David and me, has he, have they?
And Kim was online, but she's left, so.
Oh, okay. So they are doing a community attitude survey or something and wanna. Um, get some input from us or collaborate with us or do something with us?
Yeah.
CCL. Oh, you wanna, you mean they wanna do the same, they wanna piggyback on our survey?
I don't know exactly.
I think they just don't wanna.
Ask the same questions?
Exactly.
Um, so why don't, do you wanna ask him to be here on the second?
Do you wanna ask one of us to meet separately with them? Cause it's not an official planning board function to consult on a CCL survey.
Are you volunteering, Hibi?
Kind of.
What if we just tell them what we're, give them our survey?
Well, I, I, she's just been pushing to meet with the board and. Um.
I mean, I really don't know. Much about them, what their mission is, they're, they're, they do good things in life, but.
Yeah, they try to help people.
But I don't know who's doing their survey, what qualifications they have.
Ever come in and, you know, give her a half hour to or more to. Um.
I mean, yeah.
She, she was here the other.
She was here the other night.
It was one of the.
Kim, um, Kim Williams, she was sitting right there.
She, yeah, she had straight up questions and.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's.
And stuff, but I mean, I, I just.
The other thing we could do is meet earlier.
Sure. Not much though.
Not much.
Bring pizza and eat, eat earlier. Not much because?
Well, the next meeting, we really need to finalize the questionnaire, right? And then, and David, you had copies for us, I didn't print it out.
Yes, I have, okay.
Um. Yeah.
It's the updated version, which includes your.
But I wasn't the only one who had.
I took, I, I took everything that Rich had done and that I had done. And then Rich Brown's question about the summary things and. Put them all together and included your stuff.
Okay.
So that's why it says to do, I need lot size minima and numbers of dwellings in each doc, district and the map of the town. Those are the outstanding things on my list.
Oh, that was Vicky.
She, she gave me the descriptions, those are included, you see, September eleventh edits from meeting. Mengi, Nat's question and Vicky's descriptions added.
Okay, got it. All right, so I guess we'll just go through that for the next meeting.
But what is this lot sizes minima, what's that mean?
It's part of the description to say what, what the lot sizes are in like the rural district and.
Oh, table five one.
That was all, and I, I didn't have it when I was getting.
And where are we gonna get the dwellings in each district?
Rich Brown.
And is, are those, are we comfortable with those numbers?
No.
Well, I mean, it comes off Vision.
I know, but.
He was gonna count them or something or?
He has a database. I mean, he could report what Vision says, the number of dwellings in each district.
I don't, uh.
How to date?
I don't trust Rich, but um, I'm getting numbers sort of come through, I don't. Uh, not, I personally.
Well, we've spot checked a lot of stuff in what Rich Brown has.
And there's a lot of stuff that you've sent to the boards and to, back to the town office that is incorrect. And so I, I.
But it probably is good enough for this.
That, if you, I just.
And we were gonna use that uh for.
Didn't, don't wanna offend anybody, but I just, I'm not comfortable.
Well, I mean, it's, it's not for anything law related, it's just for, so table five one?
Yeah, table five one has all the lot sizes.
Gotcha, oh, I can add that.
And I, it's on my, in my, back of my mind to get you a map of the zoning districts and.
Something really stripped down.
Yes, that's um.
Right.
And I'm gonna try to do it um with textures instead of colors, so that it can be black and white.
Oh, sure.
And where, where were we putting the, this uh number of dwellings in each zone?
See, uh, page three of seven is Vicky's descriptions of each district. So we would just add lot size to each.
Lot size, but why do we need to know how many dwellings are in each district?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just, just to give it, I mean, it's information about where people are living already.
Yeah. You wanted to say approximately, use the the numbers, you know, that that I know.
I mean, we've told them how many things of this, that and the other thing, I think if you can know something, you should share it.
Yeah, we should say approximate.
Exactly.
If they're not really accurate.
Yeah, yeah.
And they may be perfectly accurate, I just, I'm.
Yeah.
And a- as well as the descriptions, the descriptions are approximate as well.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this was, this was to give people a sense of the town.
Yeah.
I mean, I know your engineering brain is kicking into overdrive, but I'm just.
Oh, yeah, no, I I'm looking at these things and I'm always offended that I'm never listed as a farmer and I probably have more farm income than any farmer in the town.
I so sensitive.
Yeah.
Well, I'm valuable at conserve farmland and I get no credit for being a frigging farm farmer.
You wear Carhartt?
That's all you do.[1752.58]